Greetings, I'm Dave Throgmorton, the Director of the Carbon County Higher Education Center. Thank you for joining us on our second political forum during this primary season. As with last night, the format's a little funky. Given the pandemic, we are working with limitations, but I think we have a pretty nice socially distant setup here and it'll give all the candidates an opportunity in many cases to speak to a broader audience through our Facebook feed than they might otherwise enjoy. The primary election is going to take place on August 18th. You can vote absentee, I'm in advance right now, but I encourage everybody to get out to vote. There are three four-year seats, four-year terms available on the Carbon County Commissioners this year. The candidates are John Espy, Sue Jones, Byron Barkhurst, Jerry Steele, and Dustin Buffington. And all five of them are with us tonight to make their case and see, give you a choice during the primary season. Each candidate is going to be given three minutes to introduce themselves. After the introductions, we will ask questions. I have a series of questions that were submitted to us via our Facebook, and then we have a couple of backup questions in case we need a couple of extras towards the end. You'll be allowed two minutes. Each candidate has two minutes to respond to the questions. After everybody hasn't had an opportunity to respond to the question, we'll give you an optional one minute for a rebuttal or an additional response if you wish. The rule is fairly clear, okay? Luck of the draw, we're starting off over on that side with the first question and start working our way around here. And the first question is, of course, you have three minutes to introduce yourself. Dustin Buffington.
I'm Dustin Buffington. I currently reside in the Camet, originally from Saratoga, so Platte Valley either way you look at it. Married to my beautiful wife Sam. Together we have two beautiful daughters and hopefully the making of a successful small business. I'm running for County Commissioner because I feel like it's time for folks my generation to start getting involved. With the communities and happenings going on around us, I see a lot, I see and hear a lot of people my age group complain about what's going on. And not very many of them are willing to step up to the plate and do what I'm doing right now. I hope by seeing someone my age step up to the plate and fight for what I believe is, for what I believe in, I can instill some inspiration for others to do the same. A few things that concern me during these times in this county is the lack of absolute transparency, the way the taxpayer dollars are being spent. And I'd like to see a little more shopping around, looking for the better deal to take place. Also, a big thing right now, and I'm sure it's going to come up, is the lack of common sense when it comes to our health crisis situation. With the knowledge I've gained throughout the, throughout my life so far, when it comes to wise spending, common sense, being honest and fair, I believe I can help propel this county into the future and help set it up for success for the next generations. It doesn't take a politician or an elitist to successfully and efficiently run any form of government. Our founding fathers were common folk just like you and I, and look at the dream that they created in this beautiful country we have today. That's all.
Thank you. Jerry?
Okay. Hello, I'm Jerry Steele. I'm 58, born and raised here in Carbon County. I grew up in Rollins area and the Platte Valley as a kid. Graduated from Rollins High School, went on to the University of Wyoming and Western Wyoming Community College. I have a degree in criminal justice. I'm married with four children and three grandchildren now. Don't think I'm looking at anymore anytime soon, but I just retired from the Wyoming Department of Corrections in 2016 with 33 years of service. In my last 13 years with the department, I served as administrator at, well, assistant warden, warden and administrator with the Department of Corrections in Cheyenne. I was assistant warden and warden at the Wyoming State Penitentiary here in Rollins. And in that role, I had the responsibility of oversight and management of over 400 staff at the penitentiary, a multimillion dollar budget, a multimillion dollar physical plan. So, in addition to all the administrative responsibilities of human resources and personal management and warehousing and supplies. And so, why I'm running is I lead with my experience. I bring a unique skill set that qualifies me specifically for this job. It's my intent to, now being retired, I feel I'm not really ready to give up public service. I just want to serve the county. I love this county and the people in it. I'm looking at where if elected, working very hard with the other board members and ensuring that we're operating, you know, with fiscal responsibility, that we're being prudent with the tax dollars, that we're supporting the individual departments within the county, where services are going to get provided to all the people of the county and, you know, appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Byron?
Good evening, I'm Byron Barkhurst. For those of you that don't know me, my wife and I are raising a family in the Platte Valley over near Saratoga. We have five children. We have two girls and three boys, and both our girls are just finishing up college and doing very well. Like Dustin, a couple of years ago, I felt led to run and to be a part of the younger generation and having a voice and trying to help maintain and have a say in keeping the communities and the way of life that we've all come to enjoy and love about Carbon County. So if you'd asked me four years ago if I'd be sitting here today, I'd probably laughed at you. But I have had the pleasure and honor of serving on the Carbon County Planning and Zoning Commission. And two years ago, was elected to sit on the Board of County Commissioners. I remember Commissioner Espy asking in an interview if I knew what I was getting into. And I don't think unless you have the opportunity to sit on the board that you can absolutely know what you're getting into. But there's a lot of gratification that I take in being a part of helping the, have a voice and be with the board. And so it's been a pleasure to serve on the board, and I look forward to doing it again, given the opportunity. And it's been great, and so thank you for coming tonight, and I look forward to more discourse. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
I'm Sue Jones, and I'm 61 years old, and I'm not as old as my hair. And I really, I am enthused to see young people like Dustin and Byron take on these positions. I would like to see more women frankly, do this as well. We bring a whole different perspective. I'm their nice little nag, I'll tell you that any time. And I've worked very hard as Carbon County Commissioner, covering this entire county. I feel that I'm very approachable, and people call me and ask me things, they want to know stuff. I try to find the answer for them, and I've worked, worked very hard at that. Commissioner Espy and the other Commissioners, we have never had a year where we had money to spend, that we had to worry about extra that we could put away. In fact, the first three or four years was absolutely unbelievable. We had millions that we had to cut out of county government. We feel that we have it down to where it's a pretty well-oiled machine, and anything more could be crippling. So, the next, this year was, was okay. It was pretty much what last year was. It's the next year, which we've heard that over and over again in the state, in the feds and everybody else, that this next year is going to be really difficult. And I felt that I would like to stay and see that through, go through those bumpy times and assist in any way that I can. There's also some projects that we have started, the Carbon County Courthouse remodel and the Carbon Building remodel. I'd like to see those projects finished for our six penny deal. Personally, I own Sunrise Sanitation Service. My husband passed away four years ago, and my nephew runs that business with me. We are a trash collection service in the Platte Valley. I also serve on the Upper Lord Platte Solid Waste Disposal District Board, so I can literally talk trash too. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, my name is John Espy. I'm running for another term as Carbon County Commissioner. I'm a fifth-generation rancher, I'm 54 years old, married to my wife Diana Espy for 26 years, here just over a week ago. And we have 24-year-old twin sons who both work with me on the ranch. I graduated from Rollins High School in 1984, got my BS in Agricultural Economics from the University of Wyoming in 1989. And since then, I've been working on the family ranches since that time. I'm also a life member of the NRA. Growing up, that was my pastime, was competitive shooting. I'm also past master of Rollins Lodge Number Five of the AFAM, past superintendent of Crane Shriners, and past president of Carbon County Stock Growers. I've served on various state and county boards, including the Animal Damage Management Board for the state of Wyoming. I served two terms on it, thank God for term limits. I'm currently serving as the Vice Chair of the Wyoming County Commissioner Association Public Lands Committee, and also the County Representative to the Sage Grass Implementation Team. I've just been appointed to the National Association of County Officials Steering Committee for Public Lands. I was also the co-chair, along with Dr. Throgmorton, for the Carbon County Wyoming Public Lands Initiative. And those recommendations are currently being drafted in Senator Barrasso's office for a bill to come forward with the other counties that did come out with a product. I've served as a County Commissioner for eight years, serving two years as Vice Chair and two years as Chairman. During my tenure, my fellow Commissioners, I have been able to balance the quality of life and services that the county is required to do. We need to make sure that health and human safety is the primary things that we do. But same time, we've still been able to fund things such as our outline libraries and our senior centers, which are very important to the community. So in closing, with the tough times that are coming ahead, I'd like to use my experience to help guide the county in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ways we're going to work is we're going to shift to the right with every start of the questions. You got the first one, next one goes, you start with you Jerry. Are you for or against stricter COVID-19 rules above what the state issues? And do you feel that the Carbon County Public Health has responded appropriately to the COVID-19 pandemic?
That's a great question for Wyoming. We have the privilege of being a very small populated state, and we're very rural, so our social distancing has never been, is something, has never been new to us. We've been doing it all our lives. I really believe you got to just follow the science. If it's getting to the point where we are having continual spikes in outbreaks and positive tests, then, or infections, then I would support, you know, a stage tier approach. Right now, you know, with masks, I wear masks when I go to church or where I go to generals. I wear a mask at Walmart. I don't wear it at home or usually around small gathering of friends, but if I'm not feeling well, I do wear a mask. But the bottom line is, if the governor does order, and I know the state of Wyoming's looking at that, if the governor's court and orders mandatory mask, well then we're going to wear masks. So, and I would support that. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Byron?
As we all know, this is a very new topic, it's a very new subject. It's created a lot of complications for all of us. And as a Commissioner, sitting on the board when this thing came down, you know, the consensus was, and I believe with some is, that we needed to err on the side of caution. And what little say the board had in that, as, as we have to follow the directives of the governor and the state health officer, we did that, and I think that was important. And as we worked collectively as a society to flatten that curve, I think a lot of the strain and stress that came about was the length of it and the term of it. And as we've learned about more science, and we've learned about how it's affected people of different ages, and learned that it doesn't hospitalize as many people as originally thought, my opinion's changed. And my opinion today, to answer your question directly, is that each time that the governor or the state health officer adds a directive or an order to mandate the wearing of masks, I have a huge issue with liberties of people being taken from them. And so I do not support further mandated wearing of masks. However, there are those that are susceptible and are more at risk. And those people, I believe, should absolutely protect themselves in the ways that they need to, to prevent becoming ill.
Thank you. Sue?
I think the one aspect of your question is, Carbon County Public Health handled the situation. I think they have handled it very well. I know Amanda Brown and Jackie Wells, the two public health officials, have, have really worked hard. They have put in long, long hours, still are. Dr. Wayne Couch is our county health officer. We've taken some heat from some people over in my end of the world about him not living here. Dr. Couch is very qualified. He has connections here, comes back to this county quite often, as he is the nursing homes physician. He's also Medicine Bowe Clinic's physician. He has worked directly with many, many COVID patients in Banner Health at Greeley, Colorado. So he brings some expertise there. And those three individuals have been incredibly responsive to variances, to questions, to concerns, to actually getting the data out to all of us so that we know exactly what's happening in our county. State statute in Wyoming is very limited as to what they can do in these kind of situations. There are restaurants and bars and salons that have restrictions that are far greater than Walmart or Home Depot, simply because the state has licensing authority over them. But overall, in Carbon County and how we've dealt with it, I think that our people have done an absolutely wonderful job, and I thank them personally, and I feel very safe in Carbon County.
Thank you. John?
I, in the beginning, I really agreed that we had to stop, take a breath, and, and follow these. And having said that, we as Commissioners have very little say on what goes on. The public health orders are outside our purview, outside our control. The only thing we control is appointing the public health officer, and then that he operates under his own state statutes. I would not like to see a mandated face covering requirement from the state. I believe in personal responsibility and personal choice. And I think we in Wyoming, especially Carbon County, have done that. We have behaved ourselves as a rule. We have stayed out of areas that would bring that in. My wife and I have canceled two vacation plans because of this pandemic. And so I really, I believe in the carrot instead of the stick, you know, encourage people to do what's right, to wash their hands, to hand sanitize, to do what's right, not only for themselves, but for their neighbors. And I really think that's what we need to focus on, is that not turn this into political football. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dustin?
Can you repeat the second part of that question?
Sure, I can. Second part of the question is, do you feel that the Carbon County Public Health has responded appropriately to the COVID-19 pandemic?
I'll answer that one first, and I'll say yes, I think they have responded to it very well, at the best they can. Like John mentioned, County Commissioners are very limited in what they can do. Don't remember the exact statute. But basically, the state health officer has the authority to shut whatever they want down in the instance of a pandemic, basically. I am absolutely 100% against stricter regulations such as face coverings or anything like that. Anything that starts coming in, starts interfering with my personal liberties, I have a big problem with. And I think there are a lot of people that agree with me on that. A lot of people say, well, look at the science, and what's the right science? I mean, you got, you got scientists on one side saying masks are very harmful for you, and then you got scientists on the other side that are saying, wear a mask every day. So what's the right science? And who's got the right answer for when all this ends? Nobody knows. So, I guess that's where I stand on it. I'm absolutely against stricter COVID-19 restrictions.
Thank you. Changing the focus a little bit, Byron, this one's coming to you. Economic development is critical to our county. As a Commissioner, what steps have you taken or would you take to diversify our economic base? And what industries do you believe would be best for Carbon County?
Well, that's a good question. I remember sitting here two years ago, and we were talking about the wind energy coming in. And as much as I hate the effects that it has on our panoramic viewsapes, you know, we had an opportunity as a county to diversify a little bit. And we've been through a lot of boom and bust cycles with, you know, anything from coal, the coalbed methane, to several other things. And I guess, you know, when you look at the, the effects of the wind energy right now, we're seeing a lot in Carbon County. My wife and I run a real estate company, and so we see a lot of that through rentals and tenants and things. And there's a lot of money being spent in Carbon County right now. As far as future economic development goes, I think the Carbon County Economic Development Corps is doing an incredible job of advertising and drawing tourism in. If you'd have been in our side of the valley over the forest, you'd have thought that it was downtown Denver. You can almost not find a place to camp on the mountain anymore. And this is in light of this pandemic. And, and so I support the tourism, and I support the economic benefit to our county. But it's a double-edged sword. It means that our county's grown, and it means that, you know, times are changing for Carbon County. We're going to have more dense population than what we're used to or accustomed to. So I don't know if I answered your question, but that's kind of my viewpoint.
Thank you. Sue?
Diversify economy, how many years has that question been asked? I think that, that we, we are changing our economy simply because we have to. There's so many things not here anymore. Coal and oil and gas is down. We must embrace those that are here. Sinclair is huge to this county. Keep them in place. They employ a lot of people in this county, as we all know. There's a lot going on with the tourism, and particularly in the two valleys, Little Snake Riller Valley, the Three Forks Ranch is expanding. That's, that's huge in property tax dollars as well as lodging tax. Brush Creek is, is enormous and getting bigger and bigger. They are probably upwards of $10 million in property tax alone, not to mention what they bring in to lodging, sales. They employ anywhere from 300 to 400 employees every year, and that's big. And Three Forks is matching that, and then we have people coming through. I know Carbon County Visitors Council, the old Panjoint Powers Board. There's a lot of activity going in Rollins. So tourism is becoming a big thing, and we still need to embrace what keeps us that level. The ag, like I say, the Sinclair refinery, the, the oil and gas, what is there? The wind energy, it's a big bump now, it, it doesn't really pay a lot. But it does, it's, it's here, and, and we need to, and the bottom line is, it's development on our terms. We have to be very, very careful how that comes in and what it does to where we live, because we all know why we live here, and we don't want to lose that in any way, shape or form.
Thank you. John?
As Commissioner Jones alluded to, you know, that I remember economic diversity being touted when, in the crash in 1982, when I was sophomore in high school, you know, and then... touted when, in the crash in 1982, when I was sophomore in high school, you know, and we're still singing the same song here in 2020. We, as a state, have probably not done what we could. Every time we thought we needed to do something, we would, oil and gas would come to our rescue or whatever. But we have to be careful as we diversify our economy that we don't sell our soul with that. We have to do it in a structured manner that does not take away our multiple use of our public lands and that heritage that we have. It's a balance and act. I think we need to make sure that our agriculture is stable and what we can do for our ag producers. Carbon County is one of the largest cattle-producing counties in the state of Wyoming. And tourism along with that. And if tourists want to see maybe a few women males, but they don't want to see them from Independence Rock to the Sahara Madres either. And so we have to balance all this with that. We can't go out and get greedy going after future avalanche taxes or any of that. It's a tough deal to do and we don't want to make a deal with the devil as we develop our state.
Thank you, John. Dustin?
Can you repeat the question, please?
I surely will. It's kind of a two-parter. Economic development is critical to our county. As a commissioner, what steps have you taken or would you take to diversify our economic base? And what industries do you believe would be best for Carbon County?
First of all, we can't diverse the county or state unless people are willing to be diverse. That's not happening. I'm willing to diversify, I'm willing to be diverse. We're right here on the intersection of 287 and I-80. Those are both highways that go north and south, east and west, nonstop. There's no reason why we can't have some sort of incentives developed for manufacturing companies to come in or processing plants for slaughter for the ag industry. You know, now we have that new farm-to-table deal where a guy like John can sell a beef stick right out of the bed of his pickup truck, essentially. We need to offer some sort of incentive to these ranchers to get more involved with And the second part of that question?
Second part of the question is, what industries do you believe would be best for Carbon County?
And, you know, wind energy is big. Like they mentioned, obviously nobody likes looking at turbines and they only last for, I don't know, 10, 15 years before they start falling apart. The big ones would be, for me, agriculture. We need to, and then manufacturing. We need to bring in some sort of manufacturing, like Sheridan County brought in Weatherford. Look what they did. I mean, that, they didn't have a huge incentive there, but moving from California to Sheridan County, that was a big enough incentive to them. We can get companies from other places to do the same thing. We just have to be willing to be diverse. Here.
Thank you. Jerry?
Okay. Diversifying our economy is, that's a, that question comes up a lot every year, every election, what are you going to do to diversify? It is a double-edged sword. It's difficult to do and with our lifestyle, you know, how do you, I'm not a big wind farm fan as well. I don't like seeing them out in our country, but, you know, they're here. Tourism as well, really did notice on the fourth, the amount of people in our county and our town and our rivers and lakes and it was amazing. So tourism is something that we can continue to promote and grow because I think people want out of Denver. They want out of those large populated areas now that they can come into the state. We're right here. So that's coming. So we do need to promote that development and manage it on our terms. You know, as far as possible industries to promote or recruit, I seen the other day that the new booming industry is sanitation and cleaning. ServePro. ServePro can't hire employees fast enough because sanitation requirements with this coronavirus, it's a, and you know, to my knowledge, we don't have that in the state. You know, you have small cleaning businesses, but that's probably going to be a booming business for a while. But in the next year, coming up from everything you read and understand, our financial crunch is going to hit us. And I think as a commissioner, really focusing on delivering, making sure that county services are being delivered is going to be a focal point. When money's going to get very tight and we still want to make sure that people in the county are getting, you know, whatever services they need from license plates to titles to paying their taxes to whatever the case may be, road and bridge, make sure the roads are maintained. That's going to be a focal point for the next coming years.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Sue, starting off with you. What is the role of our cultural institutions like museums and libraries in county economic development and indeed the health of the county?
Very important. They're one of the reasons that we have lots of visitors through here. I know the Old Pin is one of the most visited places around and the libraries serve a need. They're very important in our communities. And I know we had, we had some funding issues with those a few years ago. I am very proud that we got that worked around and those people are bought in, so to speak, into their facilities. Each individual library in each community, the people are taking care of those and making sure that they function. The museums are the same way. We have eight museums, I believe, in this county. One of them is the County Museum by statute, which is the one in Rollins. And they receive some tax levy dollars to function. They have a full-time staff. The others work mostly on volunteer labor and donations and they're all looking for donations. And those are the kind of cultural things that we need. And what your museums do most for us is preserve our local histories, which are very important. Then we know why we are here. We know what, when John and I say we're five generations, you know who that very first generation was of year five. They're extremely important and they're, in a lot of levels, far more important to those of us who live here than people passing through, even though they do serve a huge need for the people driving by to come see us, come see where we come from, so that you understand that.
Thank you. John?
Cultural resources in general serve a twofold purpose here and Commissioner Jones really hit on it, you know? It shows us where we've been and where we've came from. And along with that, you have to have those sorts of things to attract businesses and workforces because if you don't have something for them to go see, go do, recreation and, you know, the, we're sitting here in Carbon County, we have historic trails that come through that people can go out and walk and do that during the days. We have a lot of, a lot of history here that can help enrich people's lives if they go out and really explore it and get into it. The Continental Divide Trail crosses our property in two different sections of Carbon County, once in Sahara Madres and once in Bridger Pass. To stop and talk to those people and really see and talk about the county and, or more than just the red desert. You know, you don't see a lot of Carbon County from Interstate 80. And getting people off to see the Old Pin, they see the Old Pin and maybe they're going to go to the museum, they're going to go downtown and they're going to learn about our community and our heritage. And those, having those things in each of our community that it's, so they're more than just a bathroom break for somebody stopping by. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dustin, while we're swinging the camera around, what is the role of our cultural institutions like museums and libraries in county economic development and indeed the health of the
I think it's very, I think they play a very important role as everybody mentioned before, preserving history, very, very important to me. And it should be to everybody else, especially like John said, somebody coming here, like maybe a business wanting to come here and start up and hey, they can advertise that Overland Trails here and Continental Divide Trails here. And that might attract employees to come work for them or something like that. I also, I also don't believe, I might go off on a little different subject here, I also don't believe it's the responsibility of the taxpayer to keep those museums running That is something that definitely needs to be sent over to the balance and voted upon. But these museums that are struggling financially, they could probably get together and have some sort of fundraisers or benefits or banquets, you know? Look at the Elk Foundation banquet, you know? Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation doesn't ask for taxpayer dollars to support them. They have banquets, they have fundraising events, things like that. While I feel it's important, I also feel it shouldn't be responsibility of taxpayers to take care of it.
Thank you. Jerry?
Like what's been already mentioned, the cultural resources is vitally important for our county and our development. It is our history and we're all fifth generation, I'm third, fourth generation, were raised. It is my history, it's my family's history. We are lucky and we're rich with what we have offered in this county, from Seminole Reservoir to the Platte River to the Medicine Bow to the Snowy Range to the Red Desert. Preserving that history and being able to present it to people coming through, you know, and Frontier Prison, I didn't get to work there, but I trained there when I started as a correctional officer in 1984. We trained using the old cells. Now it's, and I've done a couple of tours, it's very well-run, it's very neat things if you haven't never done it, but. So these are just benefits and assets for this county and to help, it's a very positive thing.
Thank you. Byron?
I don't know how you add to anything that's already been said because they're all good, valid points. A lot of our history is what draws people to the county. And I think there's a sense of needing to have roots and a sense of needing to be grounded. And so, you know, when people have the opportunity to hike up to the Indian Bathtubs or, you know, the Continental Divide Trail, as Commissioner Espy mentioned, you know, you can follow that trail from Bridger Pass all the way down into northern Colorado and it's just incredible to have those kinds of resources. I would disagree with Dustin that I think that as a county and as citizens, that it's our responsibility to fund those museums and to take care of them and to preserve that way of life so that people have the opportunity to come in and learn about our rich history with logging and the copper mines. You know, when you set up Third and Camet Museum, for example, and people drive from all over the nation to see the double-story outhouse and y'all have probably seen it, but, you know, I sit and I'm enamored by the 16-mile tram that they had that moved that copper out of there. I'm enamored by the work ethic and the sweat that it took to accomplish that. And so to be able to take a drive and end up on the Overland Trail where pioneers rode in wagons without any kind of suspension whatsoever, maybe being a razor and be having the kidneys knocked out of you, and they were doing it in a wagon. That's something that's rich and it's important. I'm blessed and share a very deep, rich roots here and I'm thankful for that and I want to do everything we can to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. John, this comes from a Facebook viewer. It's a road and bridge question. They wonder about the county setting their priorities and concern that their county roads are not being plowed sufficiently, leaving ranchers and folks stranded and unable to get supplies or feed their livestock. I think the question is, how do you set the priorities in this massive county about plowing roads and ensuring that human life and commerce can carry on?
Last winter really brought that to a head. This county hadn't seen a winter like that for quite a while. And we have some county roads in the county that are, it's infeasible to call them year-round roads. The county does have an off cuff policy that any rancher that does need to get their livestock out, feed in, fuel in, the county will use what resources and what it can do to help assist that rancher. Having said that, that doesn't mean we can keep your road open 24/7. YDOT can't even keep Interstate 80 open 24/7 and they got a lot deeper pockets than we do. As an example, on our ranch last year, we bought a side-by-side and tracked it. And there were some days at that side-by-side to get into the ranch, had to go 13 miles one way. And that was down a state highway for eight miles, down a county road for two miles, and then turn in on our private road. I have six miles of private road once we leave. And I do emphasize with those ranchers that had issues last winter and we did what we could to help, but we also have to make sure that kids can get to school. We have to make sure that we don't have stranded people out on our high-use county roads. And one of the things that's really driving this is people and their GPSs are costing us a lot of resources to go rescue people that are in places they don't have to be. And we paid a boatload of overtime last year and tore up a lot of yellow wire trying to keep our roads open.
Thank you. Dustin, sort of the same question and it's more a question about priorities. How do you set priorities when there are some folks in the county who feel that they were stranded and unable to get supplies and food to their livestock and so forth?
I have some constituents that live over in McFadden and I wouldn't doubt if this question came from them. They'll be lucky if they ever see their blade touches their county road, ever. And granted, it's only a five-mile stretch, but it's still a county road in Carbon County. And I think that if they're not going to provide the service for these guys to get out in the wintertime to plow their road or something like that, go buy a used piece of equipment, park it at their driveway so they can. They shouldn't have to tear up their equipment to clear the county road. It's not their property to worry about. Another thing with that is someone might say, well, how do we afford that? Well, all these guys are driving around these heavy-duty diesel pickup trucks, probably don't need to have them either. Some might argue, well, we need to pull a trailer with it. Well, that's what they have semis for. I see two trucks in Camet every day. One of them drives maybe two blocks and it sits there at the shop all day long, not being used. That's a big waste of money. That money could be used towards purchasing better equipment or more equipment to maintain these roads better. We need to consolidate, these are areas where we need to consolidate things so we can free up money to better benefit, such as clearing roads in wintertime. I mean, one of them fuel filters on one of them six, seven Dodge Cummins costs $97. I know this because I'm a mechanic, I work on them all the time. That's just kind of spending that needs to be spent elsewhere so we can get these things accomplished.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like there is somewhat of a plan from what Commissioner Espy mentioned regarding prioritizing county roads. That's one of those things, road and bridge farms are vital service, but they are limited in what they can do. My father-in-law also operates a cattle ranch and we were stuck last winter trying to get our cattle out, like a lot of people, but you understand. like, like a lot of people, but you understand, you know, the road and bridge is, they can only do what they can do. But, you know, I'd say taking that plan, prioritizing specific county roads possibly that would need maybe more attention. At least addressing the McFadden, Rock River area, if, if that's accurate. You know, that, they need to be provided with service. But again, it, it's tough with a small amount of staff. The road and bridge, as I understand, my father worked for them for years and as a kid. They had a lot more operators in the seventies than they do, but it was better economic times than they do now. And that's understandable, well, all, all departments were, have been, you know, staffing has been reduced. And so you have fewer operators than we had during boom cycles. So again, fine-tuning that plan, doing what you're communicating, the plan to all residents of Carbon County and ranchers. And they, folks, so they know that, okay, if you call, it sounds like that's the end place. So, and we, I know it, I knew, but that's, that's, that's what you do.
Thank you. Byron?
Would you mind repeating the question for me, please?
Yeah, it's a kind of a priority question. And it's from a person who's concerned that we didn't do appropriate plowing of county roads, leaving some ranchers and folks stranded, unable to get supplies or feed to their livestock. And I think they're concerned about how priorities are set to allow that to happen.
Well, I'd like to start by saying that there were some issues before I got on the board that I saw with county roads. The board collectively and through some very difficult discussions and kind of painstaking, painstaking process, made some changes with the leadership of the road and bridge. And the current leadership and the current teamwork that I see working at the road and bridge is just phenomenal. And if those constituents have a problem, I know with absolute certainty that the young lady that's running that right now is, is available for phone calls. They respond, they take care of things. What some people don't know is that there's just over a thousand miles of county road in Carbon County. And it takes a tremendous amount of resources to, to take care of that. And so we prioritize the county roads. We obviously can't go plow everyone's private drive. It wouldn't be fair for me to send somebody to plow Jennifer's private drive and not plow someone else's. However, I would echo what Commissioner Espy said, that we, you know, make every attempt to, to do those resources and provide them when it's needed. But when you've got ten, twelve, thirteen foot snowdrifts and we've got two snow blowers trying to keep stuff open and have a winter like we did last year, we're, we're trying to send as much resources that we have available at that time to that area to take care of it. But I see a lot of positive things happening in our road and bridge department. And lastly, I would say you could probably power a small village with our road and bridge budget. And for them to do what they're doing with the limited resources that they have in the great expanse of square miles that they do, I'm, I'm very impressed and very happy with how they're doing things now.
Thank you. Sue?
I agree with Commissioner Barkhurst. Our new management at Road and Bridge is, she's made huge strides and that's Candace Fritz. She is prioritizing the roads with her crew who are out there. They know exactly what's, what's out there and what needs to be done. It is very difficult in a difficult winter. And we also, of those over a thousand miles of roads, we have county roads that we have thought about prioritizing, even down to the point of do these need to be county roads. There's two trackers that go nowhere that are county roads. We need, we need to look at those and prioritize. There's also roads that are very, very busy with industry and recreation. Seminole Road is very, very busy. Two ninety-one that we're working on right now and two seventy, we're using impact funds for that. We have CMAC for dust mitigation grant for that. Those are very, very busy roads with power line and wind turbines. And it is the pipeline to the backwaters of Seminole. Otherwise, then there's ranching, a very large ranching community that lives out there that uses that road. And, and another thing that we have found is over the years, it's been many, many years, that lots of roads have not had anything done with them. And so to be quite honest, we're way behind. And so we have to prioritize, okay, what are we going to first? And it's going to take just as many years to catch up, fix up, and shape up as it did to get behind. And so that's kind of where we're at. We're a little bit of catch-up, we're a little bit of move forward. But I think that with our new management and the morale and the very hard workers that we have in Road and Bridge, that we will get there and we will have first-rate county roads.
Thank you. Dustin, coming back to you. It's kind of a three-part question, but they're all related parts. What is the purpose of the Carbon County Crisis Center? Is the center serving that purpose? If not, how would you adjust the center to meet your expectations?
I'll be honest with you, like I will be all the time, I don't know a whole lot about that right now. And that's just something I, I'm not willing to answer or even attempt to answer. Without knowing all the facts that I need to know, I'll have to do more research and do that before I can answer that question. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, I'm similar to Dustin, I'm a little familiar with the Crisis Center. It provides valuable service for this county and for women and children that are in a, in a vulnerable or, or dangerous situation. It was, it was a topic that came about about eight years ago, how to fund it, how to, you know, to build a, a center where children could be kept and with their mothers. It, it's a valuable service, but again, I'm not as familiar on how it's operating. I see improvements at the drive-by all the time, the improvements that have occurred out there and in the physical plant part of it. As far as the staffing, I'm not as familiar, but that's what, that's about it right now. It's a vital service.
Byron?
Well, first I have to say I admire Dustin and Jerry both for being honest. I remember being asked this question and not having as much knowledge about it then as I do now. But I understood of, you know, a sliver of the vital importance and the benefit that it provides to our community. Since that time, my wife and I and our business have donated items to the Youth Crisis Center. We've done some kind of not fundraising, but donation-type drives to take things over there. We did socks and blankets and, and different things. And I got to meet the staff and visit with some of the youth there that were there at the time. And I, I kind of see unfortunately, the, the need for the Youth Crisis Center becoming a more important, vital thing in our community. And I guess that what, what that translates into is that we have a greater breakdown of our families. And so we're seeing more kids in the Youth Crisis Center. It also does provide, you know, opportunity for kids when they get in trouble at school and they have, you know, out-of-school suspension, both parents work. A lot of times those kids end up at that Youth Crisis Center. And so it's a vitally important thing and I absolutely support counting taxpayer dollars being used to help fund that. And it was pretty neat and I, I admire the staff down there because you can tell that they really care about the youth in Carbon County.
Thank you. Thank you. Sue?
Youth Crisis Center, eight years ago, when Commissioner Espy and myself got on the county commission and Lindy Glode, it was built. Who was gonna run it, how was it gonna be run? There was lots of questions. Lindy and myself made contact with Cathedral Home in Laramie. That's what they do there, they also do that in Casper. That's who's currently running it now. They do an absolutely wonderful job. And in my opinion, it is a shining star in Carbon County. Even though what it deals with is a very sad situation and an issue that we have in our society that we need to deal with, they do a wonderful job. We just recently put an addition onto that building and probably going to need some more. Cathedral Home is also very good at finding funding to operate it. That's what they do. And, and it is something that we in Carbon County can be very proud of and it serves a very serious need and, and it does its job. And that is one of the things that I can say by hands down, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing and serving the needs of the youth in this county, all over the county.
Thank you. John?
The Carbon County Youth Crisis Center is, is one of those institutions that in society you wish you didn't have to have, but we need it and it's serving a great purpose for this community. It, along with the diversion program that was brought in to, to work with it through the county attorney's office, is keeping troubled youth out of our courts, out of our jails, and keeping them hopefully on the track to become productive members of society. And, and without that, having that kind of institution here in the community, we would have to be putting some of these youth in jail just because there's no other place to put them. And that, to me, would be a crying shame. So I, I believe in long when the tax dollars that go into it, save the taxpayers' money due to the lack of prosecutions that we have to do, lack of juvenile jail facilities, because Carbon County does not house juveniles. We, we send them out to either Shrewland or Trona County. And, and every, all the costs that go with that. This, this is a, a great asset for this community and, and the community has, has come behind and supported it. And I'm glad we have it and I'm glad the commissioners that came before Sue and I have the foresight to, to go out and get the funding to do that.
Thank you. Final question, then we'll give you all a chance to do a, a wrap-up here. Jerry? What would you do to encourage eighteen-year-old citizens to register and vote?
Well, funny, funny you should ask that, I happen to have an eighteen-year-old. And she, she's very opinionated and she's completely on the other spectrum from a political standpoint as I. She's, she's very liberal-minded, but.
Can I have that number?
So there's not an issue in my home, she, she pays attention to politics and especially with, during this pandemic going on. You know, we, we, from a county commissioner standpoint, I'm not certain how much we can do, but we sure can communicate and do, make every effort from public notice standpoint, public announcements. You know, get out the vote. You know, take the time maybe as commissioner to go down to the high school and talk to the high school, the principal and say, you know, get time with the students, the senior classes and the junior classes. But it's a difficult one, getting kids involved. I'm very, I'm like Byron, I'm very impressed that Dustin is, is throwing his hat in the arena as a young fellow. And that's encouraging, you know, you set a very good example. So there's a good example of how to do it, get people, get those eighteen, nineteen-year-olds involved. And, you know, that's, that's what I.
Thank you, Jerry. Byron?
You know, I have kids approaching that age, I've had some that age. We always try to get our, our kids involved. And I think, I think encouraging the youth today to vote boils down to creating a conscience in, in their mind that, you know, they're the ones that are gonna inherit the future. And, and they need to be able to feel like they have a vote and that they have some agency in, in those decisions. And, and so I always, whenever I hear kids say, well, it don't matter, it's all rigged anyway. And I'll say, well, you're right, especially if you don't vote. Because if you don't vote, you can't prove otherwise. And so I've always tried to encourage youth to vote. We have maybe some things that have changed in, in, in the history of America. But one of the liberties we have is living in a democratic republic where we can vote and we can have a voice and we can have a say in what we inherit for the future. And so it's always been really important to me to try to instill that in them. And I have a lot of opportunities to, to visit with youth. And that's kind of how that conversation goes, is to just try to encourage them to, to have a voice and use their voice. I even, I'm getting off base here a little bit, I even, I've encouraged them to look at the honor that it is to serve on a jury. You know, you, you have jury duty and you have an opportunity to give back to, you know, society. People talk about it being a civil duty, but I, I see it as an honor and a responsibility. And so that's, that's my stance on it, and that's how I try to encourage them to, to vote and have a say in it.
Thank you very much. Sue?
One kind of radical, and this is my soapbox topic, this is still we the people. And if we the people don't participate, then pretty soon it's not we the people anymore. And so we need to talk about it. Not only eighteen-year-olds and young people don't vote, but older folk, middle-aged people don't vote. They don't run for office. There's nothing worse than an unopposed candidate. And then we complain about what they do or don't do to us or for us or against us while they're in office. Who didn't run against him and who didn't vote? This is the hardest job interview that you will ever have in your life, but you should do it, particularly if you're interested in it. And then encourage young people. I have nieces and nephews that are twenty years old and I ragged on one of them the other day. Did you order your ballot yet? Oh, Aunt Sue, don't worry, I'll vote for you, he says, I'll get it. It's important though, that we encourage it, that we teach it, that we walk the walk and talk the talk. Because this is the representative democratic form of government where we, we the people are responsible for what we put out into the system and, and how it works for us. And so just nag and preach and, and show them how it's done. And there definitely needs to be more people running for the elected offices. And younger people, women, all types of people. Because it is, it's a very unique and diversified world that we live in. And we the people are literally that and we need to participate.
Thank you.
You know, that's a very complicated question, but it, you know, and I hate to throw this, but I, it, it goes back to the families and, and to our schools to teach physics or civics and, and encourage our kids to get involved in, in youth organizations where they can learn to have a say in things and help guide them along. I think the other thing we, we need to do to help encourage participation is when youth and young people want to get involved, that the older generation just doesn't shut them down. That they, they let them have their say and, you know, at one time, you know, you might have been a little radical. Like Winston Churchill once said, you know, if you're not a liberal when you're young, you don't have a heart. If you're not a conservative when you're old, you don't have a brain.
Thank you, John.
You know, it, it, it really involves everything and encourage them to apply for the boards and the other things. And, and we have a lot of civic organizations that we need to encourage people to, to get involved in. And I, I give a lot of credit to that of how I learned how, how to behave properly in a meeting and not, not, not be a true Espy slash grieve and throw a fit. So we, we really need to encourage it and when they come, come to one of our meetings and speak, we, we need to show them respect as, as elected officials in our communities.
Thank you.
The biggest thing I hear, I work with a seventeen-year-old kid every day. And the other day, we had a two-hour-long speech about his civic duties as an American citizen. He needs to get out there and vote, he needs to run for public office, that's your God-given right. And nobody can take that away from you unless you commit a felony. So the biggest thing is, is education, and the biggest thing I hear is, well, my vote doesn't matter. I don't trust our elected officials, I don't trust this. Well, for, for, for them to trust you, you have to be open, you have to listen, and you have to do, or try to do, what the general public wants you to do. You work for them, not the other way around. So that's the biggest thing I can say is education. Get out there and tell these kids, hey, yeah, if, if you don't like it, then, then vote that person out, or you don't like it, run for office, that's what I'm doing. I don't like the way things are going right now. I don't, I don't agree with everything that's going on right now. So, hey, I'm up here running for office. And I think that's the biggest thing, is just letting them know your vote does matter, and there are people out there that will miss you.
Thank you. And I apologize if we've run over a little bit. We just had a lot of people that had questions, and I think it was important, so. But it's time for some concluding comments, and Byron, we'll start with you and work our way around.
Okay, thank you. How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
Twenty-five minutes?
I'm a college professor, it takes twenty-five minutes to say one.
I just would say in closing that I'm honored to be a part of this process. It's, it's very cool to be able to sit here with the caliber of people that are running for office. I know each of these people individually, I respect them and honor them, and it's a pretty cool process. I, I would like to say that publicly that I enjoy my, my part that I played being the county commissioner. Some people think that sounds weird and fantastic to say something like that, but I, I don't know that I've ever read so much in my life, I don't know that I've ever donated so much time outside of my personal life so much, but there is some gratification from that, and, and it's been an honor to, to serve, and I, I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve. But no matter what happens this fall, I think that the people that, the vote, get these kids out there to vote, I, I think that they can be rest assured that the caliber of people that are running are going to have the county's best interests in mind. And I would like to close with saying that being involved in the county government as an elected official the last two years has really given me a great appreciation for the people that run the county, the department heads, the elected officials. I, I haven't met anybody yet that doesn't have the county's best interest in mind, and that, that's very fulfilling to see that in our county, and it just shows that with the right leadership from, from our board, that we can continue to have, have that. So it's neat to be able to, to be a part of that, and I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. Sue?
I have spent eight years at this job, currently the vice chair of the county commission. Every day's a new day, and nothing's the same, and you certainly don't want it to be the same. And I am still teachable, and you can learn things, and, and you have to think on your feet and be able to make decisions that aren't always easy to do. And I have always worked very hard to stay in contact with people. I spend hours at the post office getting trapped with something which I very much enjoy, because as an elected official, I firmly believe that we need to, to listen to the people that we work for. We are about service. Everything we provide in whatever level of government that we are at, be it municipal, county, state, federal, it's a service that we provide to all of you who pay for those services. And it's very important how we present those services as best we can. They all are unfortunately connected to money, and sometimes they're a little skinny. But we have to do what we have to do. And like I say, just to constantly learn. And there are some things that I would, as I said earlier, like to see finished in this. I would ask for four more years. It's been an incredible honor to have served these eight so far. And lastly, I would very much like to thank all of you guys at Carbon County Higher Ed for putting this on. I have done these personally. They take a bit of work, and it's much appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you. John?
Well, I'll start off, you know, thank you Carbon County Higher Ed and everybody that's took their evening off from watching reruns of football games, baseball games, and all that to, to, to view us this evening. I, I too would like another four years, I've served eight. There's a lot of things that I'd like to see move forward. I am one of the few county commissioners left in the state that holds a public land grazing permit, and so that I'm on some state committees, which actually gives Carbon County a lot of voice when it comes to public land policies and how the state addresses those. We're going to have some tough budget times coming ahead, having been through those in the past and cutting the budget. We put together a, a pretty conservative budget this year. Hopefully, it's gonna not make next year quite as bad, but we haven't seen those numbers yet. So moving, I'd really like to move forward and, and continue on to, to serve my county and in my community. My phone and email are always available to anybody. This is one part-time job that you do spend a lot of time, and like Byron says, a lot of reading. So, thank you, get out and vote, and have a great day.
Thank you, John. Dustin?
Well, I'd like to say thank you for putting this on for everybody. Like everybody says, it's a lot of work, I'm sure. I'd like to just say that, you know, if you vote for me, you're going to get cut and dry, to the point, I'm not beat-around-the-bush type of guy, I'm not a politician, I do not lie, I'm very honest. And you cannot be successful in life until you're honest with yourself and you're honest with your friends around you. I would just really appreciate your vote, and with the knowledge that I have and am gaining currently every day, it's the knowledge I'm gaining, and there's a lot more at home. I'm putting in the hard work now to take, to understand what it takes to be a county commissioner, and I can continue that hard work in the future. And I just hope for your vote, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry?
I also would like to thank you Dave, you and your staff in the Higher Ed Center for hosting this forum. You guys have done a wonderful job considering circumstances. It's been a, it's been a real honor for me, honestly, to have been a public servant for the past thirty-plus years. I also have had the privilege and honor of serving the last four years as our district court bailiff. I get to work with her father-in-law pretty regular, well, until this Corona thing. And also I've served on the Board of Trustees for the Carbon County Memorial Hospital of Carbon County, and that's been an amazing learning experience. I've been on that board about two years, and the learning curve was, was sharp. It was a lot, lot to, to become educated on, and so I knew it was better to never honor doing that. Also on a city board for the golf course, but that's just the, that's, that just there takes my father-in-law. But, you know, I believe that if, given the opportunity, I, I will bring honesty, honesty and integrity to the, the board. I work hard. I hope I have the skills and knowledge that is needed to do the job, I believe I do. And lastly, I, I would just like to say I hope I can continue serving as a public servant, and, and thank you again, thank you. Get out and vote.
Thank you. Okay. I conclude our evening, I thank you all very much. Tomorrow night, we have a doubleheader. Tomorrow night, we have the race for state representative, District fifteen at six o'clock, District forty-seven at seven o'clock, so we hope you'll join us again tomorrow evening. And again, I think Carbon County is very fortunate to have this caliber of candidates standing for an important position like Carbon County Commissioner, and I want to thank them all very much for coming tonight. So thank you.